...at 6:30. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Yes. Are you here?
I'm sorry, yes.
Sorry about that, that was my fault. He is absent? Yes. Okay, I would make a motion to excuse Derek Burton.
Support.
Motion by Cullis, support by Winchester, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda approval. Chair would entertain a motion?
An event came up today, so I need to add as number six under new business, approved NACFA ARPA Fund Release Request. And I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Clerk Winchester, support by Treasurer Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Now we will move on to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial. They do not require discussion by the Township Board and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If discussion is desired on an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will automatically be moved to the last item under new business. Chair would entertain a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda. Support.
Motion by Winchester, support by Ryan. Roll call, please.
Ms. Winchester?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Cullis?
Yes. Motion carries four zero. We don't have a public hearing. We don't have any presentations. We will move on to reports. I'll start with Mr. Ruth.
Nothing for me.
And I'll come up the line with Treasurer Ryan.
Just an update from the Treasurer's Office. The delinquent taxes have been loaded to the county, so if anybody has them to pay, you can go directly to the county now. Tax settlement was also sent, we're just waiting for them to finalize it. And the Treasurer's Office will be closed next week. I am going to an MMTA training. So if you just need to drop off like any assessing documents, like a property transfer, you can drop them off with the clerk or in our little drop box, just for next week. Oh, also, we posted the position for the Deputy Treasurer, that's open till May 11th. Thank you.
Okay, and that posting can be found on the Township website as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then the clerk?
I don't have anything.
Nothing there? And the supervisor? It's just been kind of a crazy week. I was supposed to be at the Michigan Township Association Conference. I did not leave on Monday because Parks had a special meeting that night. I went up on Tuesday, and I was there today, and I turned around and came back. Those, by the way, Kathleen, before you leave tonight, remind me, I have some Park stuff for you that I picked up while I was up there. And they have, if you can imagine, indoor tennis courts. They have the whole room filled with vendors that provide services for townships. And they have it, they had so many that they had overflow on the other side of the arena. So there were quite a few vendors there. And it's a good opportunity for networking. There are some motivational speakers, and there are breakout sessions. I'm a firm believer in education. I know Jen couldn't go because she's going for next week, but next year I hope to see you there with us. They have a lot of sessions that talk about different things, legislative updates. The MTA is the lobbying body for the townships, because you got to keep your eye on the legislature. They like to take our power away every time, it seems like every time you turn around lately. I have been lancing on more than one occasion and testified in front of committees, trying to protect the controls that we have. Just to give you an idea, they were working on legislation for Airbnbs, and that will take all the power away from the local communities to control those. So we've been lobbying against that. They had, one of the first times I went to testify was on the RTA, the Regional Transportation Authority. They were trying to take that power away. A group of the Township Supervisors went up on that. I also went up and spoke twice in front of the committee on the historic preservation tax credit and the power that gives to local communities. For those of you that may not remember, we had that in place when Rick Snyder became Governor, as he tried to get the budget in order. That's one of the things they eliminated. Once the budget had gotten back in order, then powers to be pushed to have it put back in there, because it does help. So they do a lot of things. We have a lot of meetings. We sent a lot of letters of support on different topics. And that's what that is. That'll end my report for tonight. Now, we'll go into public comment. Public comment is on agenda items only. Members of the public can address the board on agenda items only, once recognized by the supervisor. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may extend this time by a majority vote. Prior to addressing the board, members of the public shall state their name and address for the record. A second public comment is available after new business for all other comments. Thank you for your cooperation. Do we have anybody for public comment? Going once, twice? Okay, no one for public comment. Then we will move to old business, which we have none. We will go to new business. You'll see on the agenda calls for two Park Commission appointments. I'm going to be making one tonight. I know I have a couple of representatives for the parks. Unfortunately, nobody had forwarded me the information on your recommendations, so I don't have that information. Can one of you tell me the name of the gentleman that's connected to the Disc Golf?
Not a quote, it was Dave Lonteen, yes. And I'm curious as to why only one of them is called?
I'm going to finish that. But what's that name? T, two Es?
Yes, sir.
So it's Dave Lonteen's?
Yes, Lonteen, N.
Oh, Lonteen?
Yes.
Okay, I need that forwarded to us for the records, because this has to go down to the Election Board. These are elected officials. So now let me address why we're not doing two. As I said at the Parks meeting, the Parks had put out that there were two seats available. They asked for people that were interested to send information to them, so they could be considered for these positions. As I said the other night, Roberta Pachota had put out a post on Facebook regarding the Parks. And within the comment line, and I have the copy here, Pat Feeney, the Chair of the Board, chimed in and he said, "There are two open seats on the park board. Contact George Cullis, and we will accept any help at any time." So what happened was people sent their requests to me. Well, I tried to get ahold of Pat before the meeting that you guys held to tell him that I had some. He never got back with me. So in that process, you considered the three you had, but these people never even got a chance to be considered. That being said, the other reason we're only doing one tonight is Sean Gruegel's resignation came in after Kurt Miskovich's, and it has not been accepted by the Township Board. So the Miskovich seat had 45 days, we're filling it tonight. The Sean Gruegel one has 45 days, which will start tonight. That'll give us an opportunity for these other ones to be considered with the ones that you have, but as I've said, I've yet to receive any of that information. And while we're discussing that, Clerk Winchester, let them know what you're waiting on as well, the minutes.
The minutes from the resignations that you, when you accepted Sean and Kurt's.
I apologize, we were told it must cost us.
But explain to them what you need, because she sent you a picture, but you need...
No, and it wasn't that, it was a picture of their resignation.
But just let them know exactly.
The signed minutes, a copy of the signed minutes for those resignations.
So they have to be official, okay? So I will bring the name of Dave Lonteen forward to fill the seat that was formally filled by Kurt Miskovich. I'll make that motion. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Clerk Winchester. Roll call, please.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Cullis?
Yes.
Ms. Winchester?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Lonteen, if you're watching, welcome to the Parks Board. So, and was my explanation clear for you on the other one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want it to be fair for everybody, and we'll put those names in. And with the 45 days, we can put a post out, and if more people want to submit their applications, we can do so, and we'll take them into consideration when we get them. Okay, and if you would, I see Donna McBride just came in. If you would explain to her what we just did. All right, thank you. We will move, well, actually you won't be able to explain what?
Then we have to accept Sean Gruegel's resignation.
Oh.
Because we haven't done it formally.
Oh, okay, so we do, yeah, within that, as I explained, we do need to accept Sean Gruegel's resignation. And I had read it into the record at the Township Board. I can bring it up and do so here. It's dated March 18th, 2023. Holly Township Park Commission Board, Holly Township Supervisor George Cullis, Holly Township residents. It is with a heavy heart that I am tendering my resignation from the Holly Township Parks Board. While some good has been obtained from this newest incarnation of the administration, such as the Disc Golf Park and the ability to weather the COVID pandemic, with the retirement of our former Park Supervisor, the position and meaning of the Holly Township Parks Commissioner have changed. It is no longer a board position, but a second job, it seems, without compensation. I cannot uphold my new responsibilities along with working my regular day job. The search for a new Park Supervisor has been a slow and painful process, a much slower process than it needed to be. At the last meeting, selections for a new Park Supervisor hit another roadblock where, in my opinion, an individual was not selected due to innuendo, speculation, rumor, gossip, and hearsay, and not based on facts or the person's ability or credentials. I cannot in good conscience see the future of our Holly Township Parks ran on innuendo, speculation, rumor, gossip, and hearsay. We were elected as officials of the Holly Township Parks based on making decisions that worked for the best for our parks. This latest decision is not the proper direction for the Holly Township Parks, and I will not sit on a board where fact and truth are not determining factors when it comes to the future of our parks. Therefore, no, not therefore, there are other determining factors that I am also basing my decision on. But the fact of the matter is, there are known issues within the parks that need to be addressed, that unless some sort of experienced individual were to step in, will never be addressed. Unfortunately, I am not that individual. I am just a simple, everyday man who works hard at his job for his family, and at this point in time, I do not have the experience politically to make things happen the way they should. Thank you for your time and consideration, Sean Gruegel. I would make a motion to accept?
Support.
Support by Treasurer Ryan. I guess I could say any discussion, not that we have a choice. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that 45 days then starts today. So I will then go on to the 2022-2023 draft of the Park Budget. We have both Park Commissioner Kathleen Martin and Park Commissioner Joe Hutchins will be making the presentation. Oh, you need to be careful, because you have a quorum.
Okay.
I'm just, Donna, if you have a section to do it, you can. You just can't debate anything.
Thank you, Kathleen Martin, one and I, and you representing Holly Township Parks. We do have a budget to bring forward to you guys. Hopefully, there'll be no questions, but if there are, I'll try and answer whatever you might have. Here's our copy.
So typically what we do, Kathleen, is it gives the board an opportunity to look at them?
Yeah.
And we will submit the questions to you?
Yes, sir.
And then if we have the answers by the May meeting, we should be in position to approve the budget.
George, one question, you're extremely generous here. How does that constitute a quorum for a board of seven?
Yeah, but you currently only have, well, as of tonight, you have six. Yeah, as of tonight, you have six. So you're right, you're close. When you had your board of five, that was a quorum, but we just appointed Mr. Lonteen, so you're at six.
Thank you. Any questions right off the bat that I can answer, or is that all I need to do is cut it out?
If you wanted to go over it and talk about it, or if there was anything you wanted to say?
I don't think so. I think it's pretty in line to last year's. We did delete some items that were line items that are no longer being used within our park system at this point, so it's a tiny bit different from last year, but overall, you'll notice that it's...
Then we will submit the questions to the Park Board from this board. Do you have a separate copy for Mr. Burton?
Sure.
He's not here?
Yeah.
I'll make sure that he, just bring it to me. I'll make sure he gets it. Okay. All right, thank you. It'll go down as number two, Park Budget Received.
Two million, I think it has an extra zero or something.
Number three is the 2023-2024 Proposed NACFA Budget, Proposed Resolution 2023-03. It is in your packet. You will find that budget has been approved by the NACFA Board, and it goes back to both Holly Township and Rose Township for final approval. I can tell you that the budget fits within the parameters of the money that we collect for that. Did you want to add anything to that?
No, I don't know if the board wants like an overview of the increases. There was an attachment on the, that says Budget Increase Notes. Matt's here, he can go over that. I should say Chief Wile.
Chief Wile, thank you for coming tonight.
Good evening. So you have then presented the budget for NACFA.
You want to pull that mic up a little bit?
Okay, so if you get the budget for 2024 fiscal year in front of you for NACFA, does Mr. Cullis agree with this?
Excuse me, do you folks hear him in the back? The mics, I didn't think it was on.
Oh, it should be green.
It should be green. So... I said, where's Josh though?
Right here.
You got it? I just want to make sure everybody can hear you.
Fair enough. I am a soft talker, unless I'm excited.
Oh, we don't need you excited.
Nope, no excitement tonight, all right. So, starting over, this is the...
Is that better for you folks?
I can hear it now, too. I don't like hearing myself. So you have the 2024 fiscal year budget in front of you. You've had a little bit of time to look at it. The chief prepared a high-level overview of the increases to the budget for this year. If you've got your budget in front of you, you'll see that it's by Cost Center. And starting in Cost Center, 700.5, the first, actually, most of these increases are in the personnel category. The full-time wages are increasing $44,000 for the year, and that is with the hiring of two more new full-time people, and any negotiated raises and increases for our contract that are in there.
And it's important to note, that's in total, that's not per?
Correct. That increases line item 700.5 by $44,000.
Right.
Okay. And within that, there's also a bank of about $5,000 contingency. We are finally able to bank sick time from year to year. We do not have short-term disability, so if one of us does suffer an injury that is not for workman's comp, we have a bit of a problem. And it turns into, you know, how do we make a paycheck and how do we survive a little bit? So we have to use our own time. So part of that $44,000 includes some contingency for that, for us. Moving down to line item 708 and 708.5, these are part-time wages. They will increase $27,000 and $12,000 respectively, and this covers our part-time people. Part-time paramedics currently are at $21 an hour for their base rate. They will receive a $1 base wage increase as part of this. And the basic, EMT basics will receive a $1 an hour increase as well, putting them to $20 an hour. Now, also included with those two increases is part of the coverage that they provide for us when we're on vacation, out on education, or whatever we need, because we just don't have all of, we don't have a full complement of full-time people, so we supplement with part-time. So that's what those two increases cover. When you look at item 716, that's full-time healthcare, we anticipated a 5% increase in premium, and that was for $11,000 additional dollars in that line item. It was 12% to share, not 5. And what's happening with that is all of the full-time people who use or take that benefit are, our deductible is going up, that we pay out of our paycheck 100%. So we are taking a little bit of a hit on that.
And just to clarify?
Yes, sir.
When you say instead of 5%, 12%, that's from the company?
Yes.
That has nothing to do with what we've done?
Yeah, you know, our crystal ball was a little foggy that day, and, well, I mean, that's what budgeting really is, right?
Right.
Is prognosticating out into the future and taking your best guess, and we have no control over, right? And, you know, we're, just to pause on the line items for a minute, this is a 7% increase overall, which is below most of the increases that have taken place, Social Security and, you know, those types of increases that have come up, have been 8% and better. So we're still below what the government is giving. So, you know, 7% isn't that bad, but again, when we get hit with a 12% increase or 15% increase on healthcare, that's a big number. Okay. Line item 717 is the 401 Retirement Plan. This is for the full-time employees, and since 2008, it's been a 10% contribution on gross pay by the authority. A couple years ago, maybe longer than a couple, there was some talk about... Okay, there was talk about us going to a defined benefit versus a defined contribution. And at that meeting, rather than making that switch, it was talked about to increase our overall contribution to that plan. So finally, when we ratified our contract, we went from 10% to 13%. So that is what that line item covers, and it's an increase of $8,500. 851 is probably the largest increase that we have, at least from my perspective, it's IT Services. We're going to double that line item, we're going to add $15,000 to it, so it'll be a $30,000 line item now. Currently, we don't necessarily have an IT vendor, we don't have any managed IT services, and we are at the point where that needs to happen. We have two fire stations that are networked together, we all have all kinds of portable devices, all kinds of entry points, and we need to increase our security, increase the managed services that we have. You know, we do have an insurance policy for ransomware, but if they pay that, we still don't have data. So this is the point in time where we need to get serious about it. We have quite a bit of equipment that's very old, that needs to be upgraded, so this just seems like the right time to do it. We're currently looking at bids for them as well, and we're falling right within what we have budgeted, so we're in a good place with that. 862 is equipment maintenance. When we purchased, and that's an $8,000 increase to that line, when we purchased this equipment back in 2018, we did have a service contract, it was for five years, it was part of the grant when we purchased everything. So there's no out-of-pocket with that. Well, it's been five years, and we need to have a service contract for those, to calibrate them, repair them, keep them in tip-top shape. That is what we hook up to our residents, check their heart, see what's going on, deliver a shock if need be, monitor their vitals. So it's a very important piece of equipment. And again, we're trying, that's an $8,000 expenditure, an increase in that line. So some total, $125,500 is the increase for this year, again, 7%. It's not alarming, I think it's within reason, and that's what's before you tonight.
Okay, just for the general public, this budget for NACFA is $2,861, no, $2,861,500. And that is shared with Rose Township.
Correct.
Our township portions, $1,056.
$1,056, yeah, as part of the budget, they have money that comes in on their own. So we are approving their budget? Do we have to approve the $1,056 separately? Why don't you word the motion, just do the resolution?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, go ahead.
I would move to approve the 2023-2024 Proposed NACFA Budget, Proposed Resolution 2023-03.
Is there support, Mark? Is there any further discussion? Well, I lost the resolution. Could I get a roll call vote, please, while I figure out what I did with it?
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
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 So motion carries four nothing. I wanted to write it on the paper and I can't find it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, I know that it passed. I have the back page of it, but I don't have the front.
I make them with one packet.
I'm just telling you, I'm just showing you what I got. That's what I got. I know where to sign it, I just don't know where to... Okay, so it passed four nothing. And then I will... I'll move on to the, now I can't find the... Okay. Okay, number four is the West Nile Grant Reimbursement, Proposed Resolution 2023-04. This is the grant that we receive every year. It allows us to give our residents free mosquito spray, the different mosquito repellent products, along with the dunks for the ponds and the lakes. That's Resolution 2023-04. It's the resolution to accept that, and every year I have to go to... It's the resolution to accept that, and every year I have to go down and spend half a day learning how to repel mosquitoes. It's the same thing every year, but we have to do that to qualify for the grant. So maybe this year, Jen, I'll let you go do it. So motion to approve Resolution 2023-04 by Cullis. Is there support?
Support.
Treasurer Ryan? It's a resolution, so I need a roll call.
Ms. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Cullis?
Yes.
Ms. Winchester?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Motion carries four-zero. Now we will move on to boards and commission meeting dates, Proposed Resolution 2023-05. You will see in front of you the meetings for the next, for the fiscal year, starting July 1st through June 31st of 2024. And it's for both the Board of Trustees and the Township Planning Commission.
I'd move to approve the Boards and Commission meeting dates, Proposed Resolution 2023-05.
Is there support?
Support.
Are those, whoa.
I'm going to give it to Ruth, just so they know he was here.
Right. Are they all Tuesdays?
Yeah.
Assuming they're for the board, yep.
Wednesdays.
Wednesdays.
The boards are Wednesdays, and planning is Tuesdays. Okay, okay. It's a resolution, so I need another roll call.
Mr. Cullis?
Yes.
Ms. Winchester?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Rupp?
Yes.
Motion carries four-nothing. Now we will move on to number six, which was the NACFA Authorization for Funding. Karen, you want to?
Well, we did, the, the board previously approved 200,000 in ARPA funds to go to, to NACFA. However, we thought that it was best that we brought it back to the board, because we're going to actually make payment directly to the vendor instead of to NACFA. So Matt, or Chief?
Chief.
Yes, he.
Matt's okay.
Yes.
I'm reminded of my rink often, thank you. So as Clerk Winchester was alluding, there was a plan with NACFA.
Okay, we're buying you a new truck, now you can get excited.
I am excited.
Yes.
This is my excited face.
Let's, let's hear more volume.
So the plan was to each township, Holly and Rose Township, to grant ARPA money to the, the authority, and the authority would match that for a total of 600,000 and some change. And on top of that, we had the 500 from the Slotkin Grants, we had a million and some change that we were able to leverage to start replacing some assets that desperately needed it. So the ambulance, that portion of it's taken care of. The brush truck, which is another component of that, that we, we presented.
And when you talk about these trucks, the brush truck was what year?
1986.
So it was a 1986 truck? It's not like we're replacing a brand-new truck.
Correct. With the millennial anti-theft device, otherwise known as a standard transmission.
Yeah. That was good, if you didn't hear, "millennial theft device."
Right. So, so, and, and, you know, it just, we, we had a lot of old stock. The truck that we're, we're working on now is the Special Response Unit, that was in 1991. That was, you know, it's been in service since, we're running into issues where we can't get parts for it. Equipment on the truck that came with it, we're having to replace, upgrade, retrofit, cobble, whatever words you want to use, right?
To put that in perspective, for those of us, those of you that aren't old, you think, we look at 1991, we remember that.
Mm-hmm.
But the reality is, think about owning a vehicle that's 32 years old.
Correct. It would have a stork plate, or it would be parked downtown for the cruise, right? So.
So we finally have had enough funds that we've been able to replace these.
So we commissioned a truck through CSI up in Grayling, CSI Emergency Apparatus, Michigan-based company, and we commissioned that truck for not to exceed $300,000. We tried to have everything set up for the chassis to be delivered after our budget year, just to help keep things a little cleaner. To my surprise, two days ago, I got a picture of the chassis sitting in front of CSI. And I'm like, okay. So here I stand. Upon delivery of the chassis, they need that paid, which is $82,680, and they also need a 25% down payment of the outfit for the chassis, so we just get a, a body and frame rails, and they put the box on it, the toolbox. The estimated cost for the outfit is another 202,000, so their down payment needs to be 50,000 and some change. So what we would like to do is have, ask for no more than 134,000, so it's 133,330, released out of that original 200 allocation, so that we can get a check cut to CSI and delivered. That way they can start moving forward with the project.
And, and that money, Jen, would come out of that 200,000?
Mm-hmm.
I, I said that because she's the treasurer.
Yes.
And, and obviously, that doesn't pay for the entire truck, so there's still 160-ish. We do have a change order sitting out there, I'm not sure what the cost of that is yet, but I don't think it's going to be much.
That's going to leave you with 66,000 from our portion.
Correct.
Right, which we would typically cut the check, but it's not going to be going, you know, without, it didn't need additional board approval, but because it's not going to NACFA, that's why we thought it was better.
And, and in all honesty, this makes the auditor happy.
Yes.
Yeah, you're, you're pretty much serving as a fiduciary for the project.
Yes.
And the vehicle will be titled to us, so.
What was the name of the vendor?
CSI Fire Apparatus, and I'll send all that to you in the morning, with their address and, and, you'll probably need a, what is it, a W-9 or something from them, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I would move to approve payment up to 134,000 to CSI Fire Apparatus on behalf of NACFA for the, out of the ARPA funds that were approved by Holly Township.
Support. So motion by Clerk Winchester, support by Supervisor Cullis. Is there any further discussion? Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Cullis?
Yes.
Ms. Winchester?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Rupp?
Yes. What year is the new vehicle? So they're 2023s. They're, they're brand-new. Oh, yeah, brand spanking new.
Yep. So motion carries four-nothing.
We'll have those another 32 years.
Right. I hope not, I won't be here then.
When you get that, when you get that truck all completed, bring it to one of our board meetings and set it outside, so the taxpayers can see what they bought.
Absolutely.
If you would, please.
I will. Thank you for your support, as always. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chief, thank you for all you do and your staff.
You're welcome. It's a team effort.
Yep, all right. That concludes the new business for this evening, brings us back to public comment. Please remember that it's three minutes, it can be extended by another three, and name an address when you come to the microphone. Is there anyone for public comment? Mr. Andruski, did I get that right?
Andreski.
Andreski.
The W makes its way in there frequently, so don't worry.
I guess it's better than hey you.
It, it could be. Martin Andreski, 2105 Middle Ridge Drive, Holly, Michigan. Thank you for recognizing that I could speak. Just brief, I just have one point that I'd like to bring to the board, nothing drastically different from the past. I live in the Riverside North Development that was, that finished out the 84-home development in fall of '21, and we still have pending issues that appear to be beginning to take root with the developers, such as the roads and the sidewalks, although one of the points that was, and I made some notes of it, that was proposed, it was approved, marketed for, advertised, and represented it by having our community park, which is the only green space in that development, which is still not completed. They do not answer us, they do not respond to us. It currently has building debris in it, it is not graded, it is not, there is no possibility to cut it. All of the vendors that we've, we've talked to, the landscape said that they can't get in there, that it's not, can't be done with the brush hog, can't be done with the moor. There is cement, there is erosion fencing back there, construction fencing, there is ruts, there is just the erosion of like a makeshift ditch. There's an 11-foot grade difference between the back of the homes at Sloan and the back of the homes on Rolling Hills. So in its current state, it pools until it creates, you know, an overflow-type retention pond, and then it floods out the homes that are on the south side, the backyards and the basements on Rolling Hills. I contacted on my own five local excavators over the past month to ask them to come out and take a look at it and give us some ideas of what could be done in a reasonable nature, since it's still under my understanding that the developer still has security bond money at the township level. Out of the five, four of them came back with that it's either not in the scope of the project that they wanted to do, get involved in, or they didn't have time, or they're just, they're, by the time they would get it, it would be the fall at best. Gordon Escavating did come out and look at it, and I, I've got copies of not only the signage that was advertised, and I took pictures of it when we purchased the home, which was one of the deciding factors, that we had that green area in front of our home, as well as proposals. I'd be happy to give them to you, you know, for that. I would hope that the, the developer would do the right thing, but I've sent personally, and I think I've even copied the township on them, several pictures of the ruts they've left in there from the SkyTrax when they were building them, addressed, you know, I took probably 15 to 20 pictures, sent them to them, and I've gotten no response. I've texted them to the phone number that we had, it shows that it went through, but no response to that. It, it's just a typical ignore. I know it's not a huge issue to the township as a whole, but it is an issue, you know, especially that other developers are looking to continue the expanding. We, we still don't have this one wrapped up. And I would just beg the, you know, the board to take into consideration that there's 84 families there that put trust and faith into that this was going to happen, and that there, there, you know, is still security bond money that's there that should not be returned to them if they won't do it on their own, and we have contractors that, that are willing to get in there and address at least what would be considered a builder grade. This is not developing the park, this isn't making enhancements, this is not putting in drainage ditches for the flooding or anything. This is getting it so we can cut. We are actively in the growing season, and we can't, there's nothing we can do with it. It's no longer a situation that's under development, it's a situation that's done, but they refuse to come out and complete it. And I guess, I hope you won't see this supervisor, Supervisor Cullis as a cheap shot, but when I was looking online under certain things under that development, one of the posts came up that actually had something attached to it to your reelection, and it says, as you're so often quoted, that taxpayers deserve a return on their investment, and paying their property taxes is a big investment in the community. We'd like to think that, you know, our paying our taxes there is worthy of having this attention to, to having somebody held accountable for it.
I don't think it's a cheap shot. I did say that, and I do believe it. Thank you.
And then the last thing I'm going to say in parting is, is there have been times in the past that, yes, I have not been extremely favorable, and I probably have taken cheap shots. But as I read through and found this, I found the other half of the article that pointed out the things that you have done for the community that I didn't know about at that time, and I would like to say that I, I, I guess I'm embarrassed for not giving you credit for them, and I'd like to thank you for, for what you do for the community, you know, related to that, because I did learn a lot more about it than I had ever learned. One thing, like it or not, I will research in subjects to the nth degree.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the bond right now?
We do.
Township does?
Mm-hmm.
So that money will cover all your repairs or whatever necessary?
Um, last I knew, it was somewhere around 30,000, the, it, well, and again, Gordon's was very, very fair, you know, for the scope of it, it was $5,800, you know, to get in there. Now, he made it very clear, he's not taking anything off-site, it would all, he would bury it onsite.
He would bury it.
You know, but that would at least get it graded and slope it so that somewhere in the middle, it would allow natural drainage that would go off to the sides where, where obviously we have storm sewers. And again, I'll be happy if you'd like, you know, I can drop you off the copies, or if you want, Karen, I can email it to you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right. Anyone else for public comment? It's okay, I, I saw Anna. I got you first. I'll get there. Everybody, everybody has their time.
My name is Angela Wallace, 709 Beard Street, here in the Village. As you may or may not know, sorry, Mr. Patrick Feeney, the Township Parks Chairman, verbally assaulted myself and Ms. Kristen Mott at Bad Island Coffee on Saturday, April 15th, 2023. He began by slamming the door when I said hello to him. He then went over to Kristen Mott and verbally attacked her. He made his way back to me and verbally attacked me. This happened while we were attending a DDA volunteer fair hosted by the DDA Volunteer Coordinator, Hillary Alguire. When we walked outside, Mr. Feeney continued his assault on both of us. He raised his voice, stating that Kristen and I were community advocates, and we were not advocating for him. He kept stating that we were not stopping people from saying that he was stacking votes. I want to state for the record, it is not my job to advocate for Mr. Feeney or for the Parks Commission. He was also upset that Kristen and myself did not attend the Parks meetings. He raised his voice further when I stated to him that I cannot attend every meeting. He yelled, he berated me, because I told him I have other matters that are at hand, and they are more important to me. He furthered his anger and his hostility. Then Kristen walked away, and at that point, Mr. Feeney took a step toward myself and was less than two inches from my face. I took a firm stance, and at that point, he did step back, while he was still yelling and stating that we should attend every meeting in the township and in the village. I personally think, for me, that would be very creepy and incredibly invasive, and would be considered both nosy and ridiculous. I do have a life that does not include or involve meetings. The abuse is a pattern by Mr. Feeney. He repeatedly attacks citizens in our community. He has physically and verbally assaulted Ms. April Brandon and Ms. Joanna Barnes, of which I was a witness, as others were as well. He has now assaulted Kristen Mott and myself. I firmly believe if I had not taken such a firm stance physically with Mr. Feeney, he would have physically assaulted myself. This behavior is completely unacceptable of a leader of your township board, and a police report on this has been filed by both me and Kristen Mott. Mr. Feeney has disqualified himself from leading, and I have asked him, and I asked the Parks Commission for the resignation of Mr. Feeney, which I know that they cannot legally require. The people of this village of Holly and the residents of Holly Township deserve someone in leadership that does not throw fits, and someone who does not physically attack people and verbally assault people. It is important to know that Mr. Feeney did admit to everything that we had said in that meeting, except for the fact that he stated that he did not put his hands on April Brandon, which there are multiple witnesses of. Toward the end of the meeting, as people were so exasperated by his lack of action, they began to walk out. He then shouted "good riddance" to the people.
Excuse me, do you have much more to go?
No, not much more. He, I'm so sorry.
I'm not sure.
He, he then began to shout "good riddance," and as another citizen began to ask him once again for his resignation, he spoke out the words, and I quote, "Goodbye, pig, you're an asshole." Know that this is on record, this is on YouTube, this has been videoed and audioded, and I urge you as township trustees and staff to listen to that. The reason I am speaking tonight is because I have, we are giving you this notice and extending this as a courtesy and informing you that a recall petition for Pat Feeney is currently being drafted and will be delivered to Oakland County by the end of next week. Do know that this is all on public record. When speaking to Oakland County, they did say that a recall and a special vote could cost $8,000 to $10,000, which would be therefore billed to the township of Holly, and we are, from what I, my understanding is, that would directly come out of the Parks budget, and so that's something that, when the Parks budget was handed to you tonight, that is something that you need to take in order. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Because of the sensitive nature of what you were saying, I didn't want to interrupt, but I should have, to have the board grant you the additional minutes, but. but I should have to have the board grant you the additional minutes, but I did want to, you know, let me finish public comment. Anna Mattson, next.
15091 Western Valley. I don't live, I'm sorry, what's your name?
Martin.
Martin, I don't live in that neighborhood, I live right next to it, so I walk it often, so I know exactly what he's talking about. I'm sure you guys know, but I just want to say that Patterson is in that neighborhood, so there's a lot of traffic, kids are walking around. I'm not clumsy by any means, but as I've ran in that subdivision before, I have tripped because there's just a lot of places where sidewalk just ends abruptly. There's many places where sidewalk doesn't continue, so you are forced to like walk in the street, and I see kids out and about all the time, and people walking their dogs and everything. So, yeah, I just want to put a little bit more stress on that as well, that it really is, it really is a problem and needs to be attended to. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? None appearing, that brings us to the end of the meeting. I will make one comment, just to clarify, for those that are in the room and those that are at home. When Ms. Wallace made the statement, in her statement, she referred to his actions, she made the comment, "your board." For clarification, Holly Township Parks is a separately elected board, Mr. Feeney's not a member of this board. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
I do apologize for that.
That's okay, I just, I know that things get so mixed up, and I always try to keep them straight, so that we at least don't have that to deal with. That being said, did anybody else have any further comment? None appearing, I will close this meeting at 7:20.